Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the September 5th, 2017 Pulse Falls City Council meeting. We started the evening with the workshop with urban renewal. And I've now begun this city council meeting, so clerk, please note that all council members are present. And we do have one proclamation. Constitution Week 2017, whereas September 17th, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document in the anniversary of its creation, and where it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Pulse Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2017, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the ideals of framers of the Constitution had in 1787, dated this 5th day of September, 2017. Tonight, we also have a presentation. I would like Eagle Scout Alessio Lemon to come forward, please. Alessio recently achieved the Eagle Scout ranking, which is a task that is truly remarkable and worthy of our appreciation and respect. So what we have done at the City of Pulse Falls is when our citizens receive the Eagle Scout ranking, we like to honor you at a council meeting, and we will give you the certificate congratulating you on attending the highest, attaining the highest ranking within scouting. And it is truly an honor to award you this gift certificate. And Alessio's Eagle Scout project was building flower boxes, as I think he told me, flower boxes for, at the VFW, and here in Pulse Falls. So your efforts help improve the lives of those in Pulse Falls. We appreciate, congratulate you, and thank you for all you've done. So here is your certificate, here is a gift card, and what I'd like the council and those intends to do is help me congratulate Alessio. I'd like you to turn around and let the council congratulate you.
Congratulations to the project.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I'd like to thank Alessio and his folks for taking the time to show up tonight and letting us recognize him.
That's awesome.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict?
No.
Seeing none, would you present the consent calendar, please? Yep, wait a minute, wait a minute, timeout, timeout. We got announcements. I jumped ahead. At least we know there's no conflict. Due to the poor air quality, all park and rec outdoor activities scheduled for tonight have been canceled. Please check with the recreation office at 208-773-0539 for the next several days if you are enrolled in rec programs that are outdoor activities to see if they are being canceled. The Pulse Falls community volunteers will celebrate and honor our local community servants with the First Annual Heroes BBQ this Saturday, September 9th, at Comelon Park Grand Pavilion. Festivities start at 3:00 PM. There will be beer and wine available for purchase, as well as free food, soda, and live music. This is a great event for the whole family to enjoy. This year, for 9/11, the city, police department, and Cooney County Fire and Rescue have decided to participate in the Serve on 9/11 Day project with a project to help the victims of Hurricane Harvey. The National Day of Service and Remembrance for the Victims of 9/11 asks that we serve or volunteer to help others. We will not be holding an event on the Plaza this year. Details on how you can participate in the Serve on 9/11 Day project will be on the city's website and city Facebook page. And that was a collaborative effort and decision with the city, Cooney County Fire and Rescue Police Department. September 17th, Sunday, at 11:00 AM is a dedication of the Gladys Schneidmiller Fountain at Evergreen Cemetery in Pulse Falls. And I've not seen it. We were going to sneak out and take a look, and something came up, but everything I'm hearing is it is beautiful, and again, is just another example of the generosity and support the Schneidmiller family have given the City of Pulse Falls and our residents for years. And lastly, I want to congratulate Captain, now Assistant Chief, Pat Knight. We had an interview process that took place last week, and it was a tough decision. It was unanimous, and Captain Knight has been promoted to Assistant Chief and worked with Chief Hoag for the next six months. So Pat, congratulations for all your efforts and what you've done, and Chief, thanks for the mentoring you've done and helped bring Pat to the position he's at. So Pulse Falls will continue to be well-served in the near future. Now, would you like to present the consent calendar?
Sure. Item A is minutes from the August 15th, 2017 city council meeting. Item B is payables, August 8th through August 28th, 2017. Item C is agreement with Boise State University for city employees per capita analysis. Item D is Parks Division purchase of a Bobcat 5610 from H&amp;E Equipment Services. Item E is request by the Finance Department to dispose of various computers from the IT Department and machinery and equipment from the Fleet and Street Division. Item F is Parks Division purchase of a Kubota M62 tractor and attachments from Cordland Tractor. Item G is Black Stallion Ranch First Edition Subdivision Development Agreement, Addendum Number Two. And item H is Bosworth Annexation Agreement File Number A-17-03. And item I is purchase of two 2017 Nissan Frontier trucks for the Engineering Division and for the Building Division from Pulse Falls Finley Nissan. So that's one vehicle per division.
Questions? I almost said "ow," but if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up is public hearings, and I believe this is our final public hearing on the fiscal 2018-year budget, and I will open the public hearing.
If I can try to make this a little larger. Last time I noticed, the total on here wasn't showing up, so maybe I can. Dang, it's not, the total's not showing, but I can, I can go through this anyway and show you. This is the second budget hearing, and so I wanted just to give a brief recap of what we've talked about either at the budget workshop with council or the last public hearing. Again, I wanted to put a side-by-side comparison of just to show what the general fund expenses were from one year to the next, and also point out a couple items that were, there's a difference between what's on my public hearing notice and also what's in the notice that was in the newspaper. The first item is the mayor and council budget is, for a public hearing, it's increased $12,000 versus what's in the notice for the newspaper. And the difference was, at the time, we were still waiting to hear back from City Link on their explanation of why the $12,000 difference that they had requested over last year's, last year's request. And so Jody had met with Shelley, and the, she explained why they had, had that increase. And so I, the contract for City Link is paid out of the mayor and council line item, so we added the $12,000 into that line item. And the general fund budget as a whole is still the same, so the, the notice that went out, the, the total's still the same, just how it's allocated by department, and is $12,000 higher in the mayor, and then down below, I removed it from one of the other line items to, out, to put that budget in the council line item. So if you look at just a large comparison between even the police department, pretty much the same from one year to the next, we're going to do a recap by the, by the funds, and also, also go through the individual, what the departments had requested that were approved in this budget. And later on tonight, there'll be an ordinance that, once approved, and this is what will be in for next year's fiscal year 18. If you look at the Streets Department, there's a slight decrease from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18. Go down, Parks, there's a slight decrease from 1.53 million to just 1.5 million. The total general fund department, if, subtotals is between, for fiscal year 18, it's a 20, 20 million, 20.5 million dollar budget, and last year's request at council was 21.7 million dollars. I talked about when I removed the, reduced the line item, for $12,000 and put it into the mayor and council line, the line I, the line that I, the line that I reduced was the capital improvement line items than the other. So last year, it was 2.4 million with fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18, it's 1.7 million. And then there's two additional funds that we consider general fund for financial reporting purposes, and those two are the personnel, which our medical is paid out of, and the annexation fee account. So the grand total on that is, half total here. For fiscal year 18 is 24 million, and then for fiscal year 17 is 25 million, so there's a reduction in the general fund budget by approximately a million dollars from one year to the next. And also, there's, by recap of the special revenue, special revenue is, for requested for 18 is 1.2 million when compared to 1 million from the year prior. Capital projects is 3.9 million requested for fiscal year 18. And then our enterprise funds, which includes water, wastewater, and sanitation, which is garbage, is requested for budget is 23.5 million, and when compared to prior year was 23.9, 23.9 million. So overall, for the budget, there's a approximate $3 million reduction from 18 when compared to fiscal year 17. And then going back to those line items, what's included in those is, for police, there was a request for, initially, one patrol officer, but we decided we needed to fund two police officers, which totals $146,000. Three patrol vehicles for the police, which is approximately $180,000. Street reconstruction of $124,000. Transportation bays out at street, there's going to be a $37,000 budget request. Parks for additional surveying is $25,000. Ceiling the courts and the trails, there's $12,000. And for playground equipment at Falls Park, there's a $12,000 budget request. Third Avenue landscaping is for the, the shop on, doing some improvements out there, there's a $15,000 request. Parks reconstruction, $65,000. Cemetery software is $10,000. Let's see, outsourcing, engineering, whatever's a request for $20,000. The other position that the, we have suggested to fund is for urban forestry, in the urban forestry division, for city arborist, for 51,000, that includes medical on top of the salary, and also for fleet maintenance for a crane of $12,500. And the next step in the process is, there's ordinance later on in the council packet for approval.
Any questions? Jason?
Yeah. Jason, I got a couple questions. One on the City Link, why, why would you attach that to mayor and council?
That's a good question. Most of the contracts in that arena are, were, have to be authorized by the mayor to sign, and so we have just put those in the, in just the departmental line item. It could go anywhere, it could go in the finance line item. It's all general fund, but we've always just had them paid out of the, the mayor and council line.
Okay, I guess, I'm just curious about that one. The other question, and I apologize for not asking this earlier, but Oasis is generally funded, or a substantial amount of their funding comes from a grant.
Right.
Where will the money come from if that grant is not awarded this year?
We have, they have, we budget for the grants as they're awarded, and so the general fund picks up a small portion of the unfunded piece between what was, what was awarded and what the actual cost is. Since it's, since it is an expense in the general fund, I need to budget for that expense, and then the revenue that comes in is also budgeted as well. And it's my understanding that if those positions that are grant-funded are no longer grant-funded, then the council needs to decide if we are going to continue with those positions, or if they just, and the general fund will pick them up, or they just be eliminated.
And you know when that grant decision will be made?
We usually get the grant awards from, I don't know who's, I believe it's going to be Dave Beck that's working on the grants now, and so they, they reapply for those, and then I know I get notice when they do get, when they do receive them, and then I'll bring them back to council if I haven't budgeted them with, in the budget process itself.
Will you let us know if there's an issue with that?
Oh, for sure. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. I'd just like to make a comment real quick. We read about some of the neighboring bodies where increases have been taken. We see where there are a few councils have voted salary increases themselves, I'm not being critical, but they've done it. We did not do that. It's interesting to me that when all this is being publicized, we took no tax increase, our general fund budget is down $1 million, our total budget is down $2 million. We did not take raises as a councilor or mayor, and yet, we never read anything about that. And to me, it's just interesting, that, to me, that's positive, and I wish we could get that message out. And I would like to compliment staff for the work you've done in helping to, to bring those numbers down. I know it's difficult, costs continue to escalate. I've said all along, I think we do a good job, I think we can always make improvements, and I think you've shown that this year. So I want to, from my position, thank you for the efforts that you put forth in, in bringing those numbers in where you did. So with that, council deliberation, we don't, we don't need a motion, we'll have an ordinance later on, but is there anybody else like to comment? Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business tonight. Next is citizens' issues, and which is the section of the agenda that is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Seeing none. Next item up is new business, Evergreen Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Mr. Fair.
Mr. Mayor, council members, every few years, we go through the rules and regulations of the cemetery. We make notes throughout the time of areas that might be confusing for the public, or things that weren't working smooth, or we need to change. This last time, we went through it, Kevin Palmer, our cemetery sexman, myself, and Warren Wilson, our city attorney, went through it. It was really nice to have Warren in it, in on it this time, because it was a fresh set of eyes going, "Why do you guys say it this way? Why do you do this?" And that was a nice thing for a double check in there. The reason why it's before you is, it's said in the code that you folks must approve the cemetery rules as a resolution. So coming forward, just to let you know, what we did is, we removed a few items that were redundant. There's only, really need to say once, maybe twice, that you can't plant trees and flowers in the cemetery, and if you do so, we will remove them. We also clarified a couple spots, such as the setting of the monuments, that's always a challenge, and also, strangely enough, the number of, how we classify a number of people into a lot. It's always been three, but it's just one full-size casket and two cremated, cremated lots, or urns, or a total of three cremated urns. So, but we just worded it a little strange, so we got that clarified. Warren also went through and looked at the terminology to make sure we are consistent. We called it monuments, or, so that everything was uniform in that sense. The biggest change that we did make, had to do with the heads, the headstone size. We went from a 36-inch to a 48-inch, and that has to include the collar, and we clarified or enlarged the collar size from four inch to six inch. We were just finding some failures in there, so we needed something a little more stout. That still leaves a lot sizes five feet, so we're only going four feet, so you have six inches in between, so it doesn't interfere with any of the burials we need to do, and that really was the changes. So I'm open for questions or...
Any questions, Dave? Carrie?
I am familiar with that beautiful cemetery that's, that the city maintains, and I'm just looking at some of this prohibited material in that. How, how much of a stickler are we on? You know, I'm looking at pinwheels, that kind of thing, and then the other things that artificial flowers can only be on there on an anniversary date of a death or a birthday or whatever. Really, I, I, I don't know. Are we really going to look and check on a headstone to make sure that, that is an anniversary date?
They actually do it, and they have for years, and what it comes down to, the artificial flowers, the reality is, if they're looking good.
Right.
But once they start to disintegrate, and they start to blow around, same with, you know, the pinwheels, and a lot of it has to do with not just how it affects your own lot, but also the surrounding lots. You'd be surprised how many people have issues, where one thing looks really nice to one person, may not look so nice to the other, so we're trying to resolve conflicts before they happen, but it really comes down to what that look is.
Well, I think you've always done a really good job up there. You know, I've never seen anything that looked, yeah, where the property values would, would be deteriorating. But, so looking at this, I just hope that you maintain how you've been doing it, because I think that has kept it a really special cemetery, where I know you have to have rules and regulations, but gosh, if it makes somebody feel better to have a pinwheel by their loved one, I like that we do that.
Right. This, that part hasn't changed, so that's still in there. It'll be handled the same way if it becomes an issue that it's, you know, causing a problem for maintenance. What we really look at is some of the glass items, even rocks that are placed on it. Shepard hooks are a real problem, and that actually damages your mowers, which costs everybody money. So we look at safety, we look at, you know, that uniform part, but we're not totally heartless either.
I know you're not, and I wanted to make sure.
It's almost that big.
I wanted to make sure that continued, so thank you.
Just a comment, Dave, and just, I guess, more a request, that, you know, when reading through the new rules and regulations, I had no idea what the old rules and regulations were. It just, it's helpful to me, and I don't know about the rest of the council, that, you know, if, if what we see is like the corrected, the marked up, so we kind of see what, what some of the changes were.
And I apologize, we should have done that.
Not a big deal, but in the future, that'd be very helpful. That's it. Any questions? Thanks, Dave.
Okay, and this will be coming back to you in a resolution later on.
All right. Next is the May property acquisition, Russ Canole.
My name is Russ Canole, Public Services Director, and I'm here to talk to you about the May property acquisition. Tonight, we're going to be requesting that you authorize the mayor to sign the sale and purchase agreement with Reynolds F. and Reynolds E. May, father and son, that currently own this property. I'm going to go through some of the details with this property. There's going to be, I'm going to give you a little bit of history. There's been a lot of questions in regards to water reuse and, and what the city's plans are, and, and how that impacts our, our previous wastewater facility plan, so I'm going to go through some of the details. First, I, I wanted to introduce you to our water reuse development team. We have John Beecham, who's here with us tonight, you know, Monica Ott, and she's going to love the picture that we found of her, I'm sure. Bill Melvin as well, our city engineer, has been an important part of our, our process here. And in the bottom corner, with the hard hat on, is Andrew Arbeni, and he's our project manager. All of these team members are very important as we go forward, and they're important with what, what we do with our last project, with our equalization project, and as we head towards our next project, big project, which is the membrane project, I thought it was important to recognize them and, and let you know exactly, you know, how important they are to what we do at the water reclamation facility. I'm going to touch on a few things here. We're going to touch on the project history, the upgraded water reuse plan, water recycling projects, future plans, May acquisition, and the, and we're going to answer some, some pretty important questions at the end here for you too. So, and as I go along here, if something does come, come to mind, please, please feel free to ask a question at any time. This is the history of the project. You'll see the, the prairie property, which is the dark purple up on Hayden Avenue. The city has historically purchased property in this area, and that's something that was within the original 2013 facility plan. A couple of years ago, we started looking south, and then we decided that it was in the city's interest to take a look at the, the lost mine property. We, as you know, we completed that acquisition in 2016, approximately 245 acres, and that property is within just a little over a quarter a mile from our water reclamation facility, compared to six miles out to the Hayden, Hayden Road property and the, what we call the prairie property. Again, I mentioned this previously, this is our water reclamation, next phase of construction is our, our membrane filtration project. We're currently finishing up a pilot project that will essentially be completed by, by the end of September, developing our final reports through October, and should be, those reports will be done by the first part of November. Part of our EPA requirement is to have a final report to them by the end of November, which is what we're working towards. We're having some good success. Again, our project team's been involved with the membrane filtration project, it's been going on for, for approximately six months, a little bit longer, so. This is what our membrane project is going to look like. This is a water treatment plant up at Sandpoint that we had toured, toured earlier this year. It's a very complex, highly engineered water treatment system. This, this system itself treats all the drinking water that goes to the city of Sandpoint. The 2013 plan, I thought it was important to mention that, and kind of go through that from where we were. The question has come up, where, where were we and where are we going in regards to the facility plan, in regards to wastewater treatment? Our next phase, as I mentioned, is membrane filtration. This, this 2013 plan had us going to the prairie to do all of our water reuse and our, our land application, so to speak, is what has been referred to also. One of the things I really wanted to point out to you was during, during the original plan, the, there was the, the prairie property the city owned, the 314 acres that the city of Rathrum owns, and there was an additional 582 acres of property necessary to be purchased by the city prior to 2022. And so that's, that's a really important number. We get asked that all the time, what is this proposed purchase? What kind of an impact is, is that going to have on our, on our future acres? And I'll get, get to that here in just a little bit. Currently, again, city has 618 acres, Rathrum has 314, and 582 is what our future need was projected to be up through, and that takes us through 2032, which is approximately a population of about 65,000 people. The lost mine purchase, again, along Spokane River, just, just as a reminder, this purchase was finalized in 2016. I thought this photo was interesting. We thought we would add this in, because it kind of shows the history of the property We thought we would add this in, because it kind of shows the history of the property, the lost mine property and the adjacent May property. You'll see on the bottom part of this screen, there's a, what appears to be a, an agricultural field. This photo is from June 14th of 1932. And at that time, there were agricultural operations on this property. So I think what we hear from a lot of people is, well, isn't it just hills and rocks? How are you going to put water on this property? The reality is, it's not. It's, it's a large deposit of gravels from the floods, and there's about 60, 70-plus acres that's relatively flat out there. So as we go forward after the lost mine purchase, and the idea now is to first go to the lost mine property for reuse. Again, it's a quarter mile away. It allows us to provide some cost savings from pipeline construction costs. It also allows, allows us to phase in the water reuse projects over time, which is another, another cost savings. The potential cost savings that we estimate from those, from those two items are, is, is over $5 million. The acreage buydown, so to speak, of the lost mine purchase went from 582 acres down to approximately 93 acres. So again, as property on the prairie gets more expensive, we, we're seeing a lot of things being purchased and bought up. The development community, as we know, is very active right now in securing their future investments.
Russ, a 93 acres is in addition to what we currently own on the prairie?
It's in addition to what we currently own on the prairie. The buydown was, was exclusively to 93 was from the 245-acre lost mine purchase. And, and again, the, the lost mine property is largely off the aquifer, which has a higher potential for water reuse and land application based on being off the sole source aquifer. So that's why there's a, it's not a one-to-one in most cases. This map is the, in the green, you'll see the proposed May property acquisition, 127.5 acres. You'll see it's, it is strategically located essentially within a good portion of the lost mine property, and it's, and it's located adjacent to the Camelum Park property. And, and that is why we have decided to, you know, partner with Parks on this proposed acquisition. You'll, you'll see in your agenda report that the $1.2 million purchase price is proposed to be split between Parks and Water Reclamation, Parks picking up $565,000, and Water Reclamation picking up $635,000 of that, of that proposed cost. And the property is adjacent to West River View Drive. So as we go forward with the proposed May ac, uh, property acquisition, if this were to be approved by, by city council, this would give us additional forest application acres for drip irrigation. And it would reduce, because it's forest property, it has a slightly less acre per acre reduction, so the, the acreage goes from approximately 70, or excuse me, from 93, uh, future need now, that, that is prairie need generally, unless we find some additional property here that we can utilize as well. But it goes from 93 down to 70 acres for future need. A little bit of a summary on the May property acquisition, purchase again, 127.5 acres. We did complete a feasibility study with TO engineers in 2017 that helped us understand what the potential is for this property in regards to water reuse. We generally studied the western half of the property. The eastern half of the property is largely cliffed. There are some, some ponds, water holding areas that have some level of potential for water reuse in the future, but at this point, we decided to, you know, before we decided it was feasible to purchase this property, wanted to make sure that we were very conservative in regards to our evaluation, and so we studied just essentially the western half of the property. Again, we identified a cross, a cost sharing need with Parks during 17, and in part of 16, Parks Department put together a very good grant application and made it all the way to the federal level with a grant. The original idea was to help fund this purchase with a $400,000 grant. Unfortunately, that grant was not, we weren't successful in gaining that grant, so we had to come back and regroup and reevaluate and decide whether, you know, whether this purchase was in our interest or whether it was feasible based on what, what our intended uses are. The multi-use areas of the park for hiking, mountain climbing, wildlife, as well as the water reclamation uses, we feel are in the public's interest in regards to moving forward with the purchase. Another quick map, just to show the relationship of the May property to other, other parcels and to the city as well. This property, as well as the lost mines, the crutch property, the Corbin Park across the Spokane River and the Camelum Park properties. This is a photo of the entrance to the lost mine property from Camelum Park. We have a, a city sign there that, that, that basically says, this is a water reuse site, and it's open for public use. So what we intend to, intend to do with the recreational trails is, is, is make this property open to the public. And I'll, and I'll get into the water quality and things we're going to do on this, in this project here in just a minute. It preserves this natural area, provides us with opportunities for an outdoor classroom. We've developed a forest management plan in cooperation with Parks and Water Reclamation to manage this forest for the long term. The idea is to promote old growth on this property and make it a very, very nice, very useful from a water reclamation facility standpoint, and a very useful from a rec, public recreation standpoint as well. The, the yellow trails are the proposed trail connection to the Camelum Park and to the lost mine property. And as you can see, there is a tremendous amount of potential for public use and trail access that's on the May property itself. This project, and, and speaking for Dave, and, and this project is consistent and supported by the 2005 Camelum Park Management Plan, as well as the 2012 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Both of those documents reference the importance of, of this area from a, from a public use and a recreational standpoint. This map shows the water reuse areas in, in more of a, a block form, the green areas being the water reuse sites. And, and if you're familiar now with where the location of the May property is, you'll see that those areas, those reuse areas do extend into that property, generally on the, the western half of the 127 acres. Again, this was a very conservative, relatively limited research study. What we wanted to do is understand now, before we spend a lot of money on this property, we wanted to go in and do a, you know, a, a kind of a, a general overview to see if, if it was feasible, and it, and it does appear it would be. As we go forward with more research and more study, we will evaluate other properties. We'll also take a look at, at some of the other properties the city has to see if there is some, some forest application that might be possible in this area, other areas as well. We've also had questions in regards to the, again, to, to the soils, the type of forests, the property in, in general, and, and I wanted to show you kind of what the property looks like, especially on, this is the lost mine section. This is the old farm field that we saw in the old 1930 photo. You can see it's, it's sparsely populated with trees, it's relatively flat. You can tell by the grade that it's been farmed, because there are very, very few imperfections in regards to the, to the grade of the surface of the property. So a lot of people say, well, how are you going to put water? Again, it's all rocks and cliffs. It's really not. There's a lot of, there's a lot of area out, out in that property that is very usable from a water reuse standpoint. One of the examples that we're using in regards to how we're going to apply water to this property is up at Switzer Mountain, they have a water reuse area. They, they, they infiltrate Class E water, which is, I would say, the lowest level of treatment that you can do before, before you can land apply. So we, we're talking about a Class A water here in Post Falls, so after our membrane project, again, it shows you the, the photo of the membrane project up in Sandpoint. That was a drinking water system. That is, that is what we're, we're installing here in Post Falls as well. So the very high-quality water in Post Falls that won't prevent the multi-use recreational components. So, and so up in, in Switzer, what they've done is they've developed a, kind of a two-to-three acre grid system, where they develop these little triangles, squares, these different properties, and they, they can turn each two-to-three acre piece on or off if they want to water that section of the forest. And so they'll cycle it through based on, you know, the types of soils, how things, how much is infiltrating, the time of year, and then they can really manage their system really well. And they have about three or four different sections of the mountain where they do this, this type of infiltration. We have been up and, and our team has toured this facility. We've met with them. We've, we've actually hired their engineer, TO engineers, has been in managing this project for Switzer for 15 years. They've been working with DEQ on the permitting, and it just seemed like the, the appropriate thing to do would be to hire the, what we consider to be the expert in the area on this type of, type of project. If you can, if you can look at this photo, this is a photo that I took of the black pipe. So their, their drip irrigation system is essentially a, a two- or a three-inch polyethylene smooth black pipe that is encased with a corrugated perforated drain pipe. So they, they slide it over the top of this, and they hook it up to their water system, and they run the water through these big pipes, and it just slowly drips into the forest. And this is a new installation that they were just putting in, that they, they showed us on our tour. And after a month or two, the grass grows up over these pipes, and you, you can't, you don't even know they're there. You can't even see them. So wanted to give you an idea of what we're talking about in regards to forest land application, and this is essentially, at this point, what we are really looking at doing. Future water reuse efforts to construct a water, recycle water pipeline, develop research pilot projects, we'll be looking at what we can do here more. Coordination with the University of Idaho. We developed for our, for our original feasibility study we did with JUB, we developed a partnership with the University of Idaho, and we're going to continue and expand on that as we go forward to do research and get, get, get the university involved with what we're doing. It's, it's going to be an important project, not only for us, but for, for the university and for the rest of Idaho, we believe, as well. We plan on engaging the community, we'll be obtaining recycled water permits, and we'll be continually coordinating with DEQ, and we did just have a meeting with them last week, so. Continued coordination. Other water loss options. Our idea is how much water can we get rid of and minimize how much more property we need to buy? These are some of the things that we'll be doing further investigation and research on as we go forward. The waterfall, where you lose approximately 25% of your water. Snowmaking. We toured a facility down in Boise, a simplet facility where they have snowmaking machines over an evaporation pond, and they have about 10 of these lined up, and they have no discharge, and they, they run these in the middle of summer, and essentially, they're just misting the water into the air, vaporizing the water into the air, and it just kind of evaporates and blows away. The lower photograph is from Walla Walla, and that is a rapid infiltration project down in the Walla Walla area, where they, they actually use that over their aquifer for aquifer recharge, because they have water issues in those areas, so. One of the questions that came up and was, does the city need to retain the prairie property? This is the big question that always comes up when we talk about this. And really, the answer is yes. And why it's yes is because at some point in the future, the prairie land will be necessary for water reuse projects if the city continues to grow at current population projections. Our population projections now are approximately 65,000 from 2032, which is the life of our current facility plan. As we go to 2040, the projection is, is around 90,000. So depending on what happens at some, and again, our, our facility plan right now goes through 2032. As we go beyond that timeframe, there is a strong possibility that, you know, that we, that we'll definitely need that property. We may even need more property as we go forward, but those are things that we'll evaluate and, and discover as, as the years, years progress. Where are we today with future land use acquisition needs? And I'd mentioned this earlier, the lost mine dropped it down to about 93 acres, the May acquisition would drop it down to about 70. And again, conservative, conservative numbers. We will be doing lots of research and finding ways, other ways to, to the best of our ability to get rid of more water in this area, whether that be through some of the, the snowmaking, the waterfalls. None of those things are configured into this. Those are all future research projects. What is the plan for developing the lost mine and the May properties? The reuse property development plan is expected from TO in the fall of 2017. So we are under contract right now to develop a pathway to reuse for properties in this, for our lost mine and reuse and, uh, May properties. We expect that to be done about the end of September, and, and we can keep you informed about how that, how that comes about. The estimated cost to construct, now this is just the construction component of drip irrigation compared to the irrigation on the prairie, is, it's relatively similar in regards to just actual onsite construction per acre. Where the cost savings come in is from phasing it in, and a tremendous amount of cost savings from not having to borrow money in, in order to fund that. So when we get into the reuse realm of this, of this, after our membrane project, our financial plan right now shows us being able to fund these projects incrementally with cash on hand, and there'll be a tremendous cost savings. And again, those cost savings are estimated to be over $5 million and, and just, just from phasing in and, and, and from going south on the river, so. The other question we've had too is council involvement. What will the council's involvement be during this process? And anytime we have a contract or review, we will, obviously, council has to authorize the mayor to sign those contracts, so we'll be coming back and keeping you up to date as well as, as, you know, coming back at milestone points and letting you know where we're at and what's going on. We'll also be updating the facility plan. Since our plan for the prairie has changed, we do expect to engage in an update probably around 2019, somewhere in that range, and we'll be coming back and looking at the previous assumptions from 13 and making sure they're up to speed, and updating our, our plan and, and evaluate, and updating our financial plan as well, so. In summary, we think this is an ideal project, and, and again, number one, as we go through these water quality-based projects for the water reclamation facility, portions of this, protecting the water quality in the Spokane River so that those rivers can be enjoyed by our citizens, they're, they can be fishable, swimmable, and, and generally enjoyed. And saves money, we've gone through that, accomplishes EPA permit requirements, keeps us in compliance with EPA, which is always very important. And, and, and from the recreation side, which is, I, I think is, is very important as well for the community and the future of the community, to create this multi-use recreational area that is just going to be able to be enjoyed by the citizens for, you know, generations to come. So that's it. If you have any, any other questions, again, we would ask for your support in, in authorizing the mayor to sign the sale and purchase agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have a comment. I know that we have been questioning this pretty handily this time around, and, and you've done a great job, you and Dave both have done a great job at answering questions. I know that the viewing audience and the audience here today might think this is the first time we've seen this, well, we've, we've seen this before, and we've asked a lot of questions. I'd just like to applaud you, Russ, on a great presentation tonight, answering, again, more questions than I, than I could even think of, and I just think that that's, uh, just, I'm ready to put a stamp of approval on it. I think it's just a great project, and, yeah, it's $1.2 million, but I think we're going to get, it's going to pay dividends in the future, so. Thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Do we need a motion on that one?
I would move to approve having the mayor sign the purchase and sale agree, agreement on the May property.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. And I would echo Counselor Wolf's comments. Nice presentation, Russ, thank you very much. Ordinances and resolutions, we have two ordinances, one resolution. First is the ordinance for fiscal 2018, fiscal year 2018 budget.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2018 budget on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Porters?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, appropriating the sum of $53,42,010 to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of Post Falls for said fiscal year and establishing kinds and levels for established positions, authorizing a levy of sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriations are made.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal year budget 2018 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Resolution dealing with the Evergreen Cemetery.
Move to approve the resolution Evergreen Cemetery rules and regulations.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wait a minute. I'm off.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wait for it, wait for it. Motion passes. Next up is the Yubosef annexation ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance Yubosef annexation file number A-17-03 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 20.94 acres located at the southeast quarter of Section 28 Township 51 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property, a single-family residential R1S, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance Yubosef annexation file number A-17-03 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is the administrative staff reports, alcohol licensing fees, and I believe this is in response to Mr. Dolefield's questions.
That would be correct, sir. So at our last hearing on fees, a couple of weeks ago, still Dolefield recommended the city take another look at their alcohol licensing fees and look at maybe some differential ways of charging those fees. A couple of specific things that he was looking for is potentially charging retail stores more than restaurants and then maybe also breaking out sizes of restaurants. So if you're under a certain size, you pay one fee. If you're over that size, you'd pay a secondary fee. As you can see from the memo that's in your staff report, that's difficult to do in Idaho. Most of, unlike most of our fees, which we have some flexibility in how we arrive at those fees, so long as they're essentially accomplishing the reason that we have the fees. All of these fees are tied to a statute that tells us essentially how much we can charge. They're either a set amount, the fee has to be that amount by statute, or the statute says it has to be no more than X, and that is often tied to a percentage of how much the state charges for their license. So it becomes fairly difficult to stray from that. In fact, that's, if you look to our neighbors in Coeur d'Alene, their fees are exactly the same as ours. And it's pretty much the same across the state just because we're all tied to the same statutory scheme. We have to follow what the state tells us to follow. So looking, I mean, you could in theory lower some of the fees beyond that not to exceed level, but at this point frankly, we're not at even cost recovery levels because the amount of work that goes into processing applications. So if you were doing that, if you're to lower some of the fees on a small restaurant, for instance, it becomes even less money that we're bringing in and the general fund is then having to supplement that much more for the licensing review. So our recommendation is frankly, just to stay where we're at. It's pretty much the standard of the industry. It's what the statutes more or less drive us to. That's kind of where we're at. Happy to answer any questions.
This is for Warren.
So it's a legislative issue?
Pretty much, yeah. Some of the issues, I frankly wonder why the legislatures are this involved in setting what processing fees are, but it is what it is on some level. So if they want to take it up with the legislature, there's certainly some changes that could be made. There's certainly some things that he brought up that make some sense in my humble estimation.
Have you communicated with Joe?
I have not.
Yeah, because that's what I would recommend to him, is to take it up with our local legislators and send them down to Boise with that question. Because it does make sense. Everything he said made sense.
More comments? Warren, I would, if you would like to ask, if you will, please contact Joe, let him know and tell him we did look into it, appreciate his input and his suggestions and offer him the suggestion of reaching out the legislators. Mayor's comments. I could have read this during announcements, but I'll read it now. Derek Kosenke sent an email to Shelley today on the Parks Department. Derek is our park supervisor. On August 30th, 2017, two employees of the Parks Department, Mike Wood and Danny Heiderman, were applying herbicides at Sterling Drive. The Idaho State Department of Agriculture stopped the two employees and did a pesticide use inspection form check. He said, "I would like to note that the employees were not doing anything out of the ordinary." The ISDA was driving by and wanted to do a check. Everything checked out, all chemicals are sprayed properly, and equipment was in good operating condition. Check Holly from the ISDA then asked if he could come to our shop and do a check on our chemical record keeping. Danny Heiderman met with him for about two hours going over past and present records. Again, everything was done properly and on our end, Mr. Holly was very pleased. This goes to show that the Parks Department is doing a great job with our spraying and herbicides and pesticides. There's a lot of time we spend getting certifications, continuing education, but at the end of the day, it helps to make our department better and safer. So Dave, from, on behalf of myself and the council, please pass our thanks on to staff for continuing to do a good job. And please thank Derek for sharing that information with us. I think that's the end of my comments. Council comments. We do need an executive session tonight?
Yes.
Not to last no longer than?
20 minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken and the session will last approximately 20 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, we'll enter executive session.